One, two, three. What? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Hi, everyone. Kelly Beatty for Chelmsford Telemedia coming to you live from the Senior Center here in North Chelmsford where we're going to take up the hopefully last session of the annual Town Meeting Spring Edition. Now, this is our fourth session and I have to tell you, I have invoked the magical power of the Chelmsford tie given to me by the Mayor of Chelmsford, England. If I stroke it four times, I'm assured that this will be the last session for this particular town meeting. On Monday night, if you were with us, we got through five, count them, five out of the thirty-four articles on the town meeting warrant, and I'll go over those in just a second. To just give you a sense of the scope of this year's town meeting, this is all of the material that has been handed out at this town meeting in preparation for the debate that has taken place. And a lot of it has been very important, no doubt, and has been worthy of the time that it's taken to get to this point. But we still have, by my count, twelve warrant articles, I'm sorry, make that eleven warrant art-- no, twelve, twelve warrant articles still coming up. Of those five that were passed on Monday night, a couple of them were really, really important for the long term of our town. One was the agreement to convert the Oak Hill parcel in North Chelmsford, more than sixty-six acres, to the Conservation Commission. A second debate was having to do with affordable housing here in Chelmsford, that was Article seventeen. We have paved the way by borrowing and allocating $2.2 million to leverage that money to build one hundred and fifteen units of affordable housing, that's on Littleton Road. For those of you who were watching, a very eloquent presentation by the Housing Authority Director, David Hettison, that was approved overwhelmingly. Also, a big deal for the long-term energy future of the town was an Energy Management Performance Contract with Johnson Controls. The idea here is to turn over the electrical assets of much of the municipal buildings to Johnson Controls, a company that will promise to create huge savings in the amount of money that we spend on electricity to light and heat those buildings. That bill, that Article nineteen, that Article nineteen, which was that warrant article, required the borrowing of eighteen million dollars upfront. But that will be repaid by the savings in electricity over time, over the twenty-year term of the contract. There will be no increase in the tax rate because of that. And then finally, last Monday, we took up the issue of Chelmsford Golf Course and the fact that the function room has been, had to be destroyed because it was in such poor shape, and there is a new movement to get a new one built. The management company for that, for the municipal golf course, really needs the income from that function room in order to make it a viable enterprise for it. So, tonight, what have we got coming up? Of these twelve warrant articles, some of them are pretty straightforward, some of them are, you're kind of eye-raisingly curious, like two zoning articles that are coming up right away, having to do with medical marijuana, also one about deleting a billboard district, political signs, I'm looking forward to that one personally. And then toward the end will be some serious stuff. There are three citizen petitions at the end, Articles thirty-two, three, thirty-three, and thirty-four. Two of them brought by Roland Van Lu. Again, the Nine North Road debate will be on the floor, and also the Board of Appeals, whether to have that be elected as opposed to appointed as it is now, that's being brought forward by Jerry Low. And finally, Roland Van Lu has asked for a revision to the Code of Ethics, having to do with transparency involving bids and work orders. Now, the reason that last one's important is that we postponed Article eight, which has to do with contracts. Well, so stay tuned. Thank you. I want to discuss a little bit the order of motions. There was a motion made to adjourn while the presentation was being made. It is a privileged motion, but it cannot interrupt the speaker. And for the purposes of this town meeting, not this session, but town meeting, the question and answer period are part of the presentation. After that, you can make a motion to adjourn after the recommendations, you can make a motion to adjourn, or you can make a motion to adjourn after the debate, after the vote. The only motions, and they're not motions, they're points of order, points of personal privilege, and point of information, those are the only things that can interrupt a speaker. And if you rise to a point, I want you to stand up, say point of order, point of information, whatever, then come to the nearest microphone and tell me what that point is. The other thing, I'm actively, still actively soliciting Finance Committee applications. Now, there are a lot of good people out here that I think would be qualified. I don't put a restriction on what your job is, but I do want intelligent people, and I will make the choice before June thirtieth. And seriously consider it, I'm going to give you an example. The Finance Committee just turned down the Bulrika budget. And as a result, at town meeting, they voted to not vote on the budget, and they sent it back to the manager. So, the Finance Committee is a very important committee, it's your eyes and ears, and you should really give it some consideration. Okay, the first article tonight. Oh, yes, we gotta do a quorum call, thank you. Okay, we have a quorum. The first article tonight is Article twenty-five, and I have in my hands an amendment. First of all, Article twenty-five, I have, before I get to the amendment, I have a standing motion to waive the reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. I have an amendment from John Kirland that we change the reference to December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, in Section one ninety-five dash eight dot five dot two, to June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
If anybody wants to know why, the, many communities are having a one-year moratorium. The Department of Public Health, just about a month ago, issued the regulations, there's already been one amendment to it. I think that there's going to be a number of amendments as communities have a chance to look at it and ask questions, and I just think that it doesn't prejudice anyone to have a moratorium for an additional six months before we really tackle the issue of medical marijuana in our town.
Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of the amendment? Start. The yes votes are one hundred, the no votes are ten, one abstention, the amendment passes, and now we're on the main motion.
Good evening, Anne McGuigan, Chair of the Chelmsford Planning Board. I did present this motion at the last meeting. If you'd like me to re-present it, I will. If you remember what I said, I'm good. Okay.
I was writing something down, you've already made your presentation.
I made the presentation at the last meeting, Mr. Moderator.
Okey-dokey, we're in the question and answer period. I move the mics back so that when someone wants to turn left or right, they don't have to do a one-hundred-and-eighty-degree turn.
Peggy Dunn, Precinct One. Anne, since I believe the federal government still holds marijuana as a illegal substance, what does that do to the state and us if we go ahead and do these things? Is there any, have they said anything?
They have not said anything, and it is currently a law in the Commonwealth of Mass that these dispensaries are allowed. So, whatever the federal government does, I don't think they'd come in and actually step on the state's toes, because states do have rights to.
You don't think they'll, at some point in time, a year from now, come down on us? Or all the people, all the states that have done this?
I don't see it happening.
Okay.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee makes no recommendation on this article.
Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Planning Board recommends approval.
Okay, we're in a debate section.
Dunneeshian, Precinct Four. I am in favor of the moratorium, because it's obvious that the state doesn't quite know what they want to do with this, with this new law. But I'm also quite in favor of the law, as was every town except for two in Massachusetts that voted in favor of the law. So, I'm concerned a little bit with what I've heard about the dispensaries, they seem like they're being, almost like they're like pot-smoking speakeasies, when I don't really look at that like that. I look at it more like another type of a drugstore, like a CVS, which is on every corner. So, I hope that once this thing gets settled out, that we treat it such, because there are some folks that, from what my research finds, that this is the type of thing that will help them. They can go on three or four different chemical drugs, or they can do the medical marijuana, and no side effects, and it works for them. So, when this does come down the pike, let's not shun it, let's go with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Day, Precinct Three, Director of Public Health. Clearly, we're in favor of this moratorium. There's so many issues and problems with the initial draft that the state came up with, and how we can deal with it or not deal with it at the local level. So, clearly, the timeframe is going to be necessary for everybody to take a real good, clear look, see how some of these very vague issues that have been, come up with the draft, work their way out, so definitely in favor of it.
Thank you.
You know, if I may, in further explanation, if you have, the way zoning laws currently sit, the house next door can become a dispensary. So, the point of doing this is just to make sure that it's not right smack dab in a residential neighborhood in your house next door. That's the, that's really the purpose.
Anne, Anne, you finished your presentation, you have to get off the podium. If you want a debate, you have to use a debate microphone.
You can come stand next to me. So, this is Kathy Tupperty, Precinct One. I am not speaking for or against, I just want you to understand that although this has been allowed in the state, it is still, as you said, it's illegal federally, so if you are at Hanscom Air Force Base and you get pulled over, I want you to all understand that you will get arrested for this. If you are on state property that is actually federal land, so the national parks, it is illegal regardless. So, please understand, even if it's for medicinal purposes, if you are on federal land, it is illegal, so just, I want everybody to understand that.
Thank you, next.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. I'm going to vote no on this. I think by towns and states, voting on something that the federal government says is illegal.
Crystal Latina, indulge me, if you're going to vote no, use the red microphone. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start over.
Okay.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. I'm going to vote no on this, because the federal government recognizes this is illegal. It's a federal crime, in fact, to possess or smoke it. If you go to the post office and park in their parking lot, it's a federal crime if it was in your car, just as a firearm, a concealed firearm, would be a federal crime there. By having towns and states and the public voting for this thing and changing our local laws, and then having us create a zoning area, and then implying that it's just for medical purposes, I'm struck by the fact that, I was out at UCLA a couple of years ago, and they have medical marijuana dispensaries across from the dormitories. And I guess everybody has cancer, they're very sick next to the dorm, there was also another one by the frat house row. There wasn't any that I could see in the normal part of the city, but by the colleges, that's where it was. And I'm also struck by the fact that whether we, if we're going to call this a drug, let the federal government call it a drug, CVS is a drugstore, one more drug in their cancer treatment program. If we do our zoning the way I think we did it the other night, pretty good odds, the library across from CVS would make it illegal for that entity to dispense one more drug. I also see here that we're doing it not-for-profit entity. I'm the chairman of the board at a not-for-profit, I know what those are, but I'm not really sure what a medical marijuana not-for-profit would look like. I suspect it would look much like the place I saw next to UCLA, and I can tell you that this doesn't look like a good idea to me for our little town to be doing. Thank you.
Next.
Colleen Stansfield, Precinct Six. I'd like to call a point of order that Anne is the presenter, and she should stay at the podium.
Presenter doesn't ask to debate from the debate microphones. That question and answer period was over.
Right, now we're into debate.
Yes, and when a presenter wants to debate, they don't debate from there, they debate from where you are.
Every other presenter over town meeting has been able to answer their questions from up there and not at these microphones.
Yeah, answer the questions. You set the.
That's what I would like her to go back up there and be able to answer the questions.
We're out of the question and answer period. You can ask a question, you ask me if you can ask her, and then I'll invite her up.
Okay. Anyway, so, I would like to be clear about this article. This is a moratorium. This keeps this from coming to this town for a given amount of time, and has been proven in law that until June of next year, we can have a moratorium while we look at these regulations that have come out of the state. And they are very, very strict. You have to have a $500,000 bond to even start something like this. The staff is regulated, everybody is regulated, this is not going to be a mom-and-pop shop. This is going to be a big conglomerate that comes in and does it. And frankly, you know, being on the planning board, Anne had the best idea, was number one, keep it away from residential areas. Number two, go with the moratorium. And case law has proved that the moratorium is the way to go. You can't be in it, you can't just say no. So, I would suggest to everybody to just vote the moratorium in, give the planning board time, because the federal regu-- federal, the state regulations do not talk anything about zoning and where it's going to be. You can have a sign this big, you can, you know, you have to have certain things, they call, sorry, say it, bongs vaporizers. You know, you have to really read this, and they are very strict, and then we want to be more strict, and we want to protect this town. But, you know, we also heard from the police chief, and the police chief said that he was worried, and this was prior to the regulations, so, he was worried that people would be able to, if we didn't have one in town, they would say that, you know, it's a hardship for me to get to a place to pick this up, so, I'm going to grow my own. And they're allowed to grow, like, what, two months, something like that? I don't even know what that is. But the police were worried about, you know, the HIPAA thing, that's health insurance, that's medication, that's private. How are they going to figure out where it is? You know, the neighborhood kids all talk, and sooner or later, someone's going to figure out where it is, and, you know, they were worried about break-ins and this and that. And luckily, the state regulations say that the police have access to anybody that gets a card for this. Okay, so, they're known to the police only, but it's still private. So, I would suggest to everybody here to support the moratorium, let the planning board work on what the zoning should be for this. And please, come to our public hearings, come down, tell us what you think, and it's highly unlikely that we're going to get one. But if we do, let's put it in the right place, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Peggy Dunn, Precinct One. I would just like to reiterate what Colleen said, and that this, by voting yes on this, all we do is give the planning board six more months to make a decision. So, I would like to see a yes on this, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Sam Polton, Precinct Eight. I haven't had very good luck in moving questions, so instead, I'm going to agree with the previous speakers and focus this on something that's very unique for this long town meeting. We have the opportunity right now to take a very complex matter, and with a simple yes vote, have the whole matter studied for a year, within the law, with no pressure. Nothing can happen if we vote yes. If we vote yes on a moratorium, we come back next year after all the experts put together the very, very, very best article that they can dealing with this, and then have our vote. We need not debate it tonight, we need to either say yes or no on the moratorium. I'm voting yes, and I'd encourage everybody to do it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Rich Day, Precinct Three. I just want to reiterate that clearly this is a zoning article, but the obvious issue is that this also gives other entities some time to review this issue, and where they don't control local, control of certain things, we then will have the opportunity to do it or not do it, but this is also giving other entities, particularly the Board of Health, some time to review what the state finally comes out with, with their draft regulations, and what comes out as a final product, so, vote yes.
Thank you. Next.
Fran McDougall, Precinct One. I'd like to move the question.
Motion to move the question? All those in favor, this is a two-thirds vote. I was going to ask you to raise your remotes instead of the pink slips, to see if I can see those better. All those against? Motion passes. We are now going to vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, vote, press one. Against, press two. Abstain, press three. A moderator determined a two-thirds. Yeah, I might do that. It was an experiment. I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. The vote is one hundred and fifteen yes, six no, no abstentions. Article passes. Before I get into Article twenty-six, I have a non-resident who wishes to speak. His name is Jeff Stalard, he's also known as the former mayor of North Chelmsford, and he resides in Drakeatt. I need your permission to allow Jeff to speak. All those in favor? Opposed? Jeff has permission. Article twenty-six. Board of Selectmen Chair Matthew J. Hanson moves that the town amend the town code, code chapter one ninety-five zoning bylaw. Article seven, sign and outdoor lighting by deleting subsection one nine-five dash thirty-three point five, billboard overlay district for the purposes of eliminating a billboard overlay district and zoning regulations, and to amend Article two, districts subsection one nine-five point two B, overlay districts by deleting the billboard overlay district.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What the Board of Selectmen and I are seeking in this article is to delete the billboard overlay zone. You'll see it here on the map in the dock areas that are shown, oops, I'm sorry. Up there is the Oak Hill property, there's the high school near the stadium, and then there was a piece by the connector. Many of you may have been in this room about four and a half years ago, when the town adopted the billboard overlay district in the depth of the recession, and it passed by one vote, the two-thirds necessary for adoption, and at the time, we were desperate for revenue in the midst of state aid cuts and the throes of the recession. And it was never really popular, but even with that time, we went out, we got later subsequent town meeting vote to lease the land at Oak Hill and also at the high school stadium. We'd issued an RFP, and then worked with a vendor for three years. With the Board of Selectmen efforts, and, you know, George Dixon was chaired on those two years, we worked hard to get the state approval for the billboard by the stadium. We worked with our legislative delegation, and at the end of the day, we were unsuccessful. And then the state came back and basically said, you don't meet the criteria for a billboard under the, under the federal regulations as administered by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. So, and basically, we had no right to appeal, although the state subsequently then adopted new regulations in the advent of electronic billboards, which then allowed the commission to waive their regulations or any portion thereof. So, basically, we came back in the board's direction, we said, well, let's eliminate this billboard zoning, and then the question is, well, if you can't get it, why is there a risk in keeping it on there? And for that explanation, I think it's best to hear from our Community Development Officer, Evan Blansky, who's our basically resident zoning expert, who can explain the concerns about leaving this bylaw on the books.
Good evening. As the town manager indicated, the state, within the last twelve months, has revised the state regulations that govern billboard advertising along highways. state regulations that govern billboard advertising along highways. And the primary revision that is pertinent to the town of Chelmsford is a exemption and waiver provision whereby, with the support of the community, the director of the Outdoor Advertising Board and the Secretary of Department of Transportation can waive any and all regulations at the state level with the compliance at the federal level. And there's pros and cons to that, to that new waiver provision. But particularly for Chelmsford, if the town of Chelmsford does not want billboards, now is the time to delete the overlay in its entirety so that unintended consequences related to the new waiver provision do not come to bear in the community. And several examples of that would be if you leave the overlay in place, additional property owners who are not in the existing overlay will likely attempt to convince town meeting to put their property in the overlay. Furthermore, the negotiations will not be based upon good zoning standards, but will likely be based upon other criteria such as monetary and other negotiations. So originally, the planning board, back in '09 when this was adopted, told this body that the zoning, that the overlay and zoning bylaw did indeed protect the community to the maximum extent feasible. Moving forward, I and the planning board are not able to tell you that, particularly with the new waiver provisions. Essentially, the playing field is unpredictable at this point. So it's, again, if the community is not interested in having billboards, not necessarily in the original locations, but in unpredictable locations, the best thing that you can do is delete the bylaw in its entirety.
Jerry Low, Precinct Nine. I just want to make sure I totally understand what you just said. You said that getting rid of the overlay districts will prevent billboards being put up there without any issues, any town meeting or anything. But I, in the beginning, it sounded like you said, but there's still a way to get billboards up. Is that correct?
If you leave the bylaw in place--
No, no, if the bylaw's gone--
If you approve the article this evening, there will be no opportunity to have off-premise billboards in the town of Chelmsford.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Okay, we're in the debate section. Oh, Planning Board, I'm sorry.
Planning Board recommends approval.
Pro microphone first.
Peggy Dunn, Precinct One. Mr. Moderator, I rise with sheer pleasure to urge everyone to vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Stalard, Chairman of the Board of Trustees at the Congregational Church in North Chelmsford. It's nice to be back. The church would actually urge this body to do one of two things, either withdraw the motion and hold it till October, or defeat the motion. We feel that while the current regulations may be an impetus against our being able to get a billboard, we did go kind of hand in hand with the town trying to move this endeavor forward. It's our opinion, and I think this is reinforced by the fact that the state has already changed their regulations, that it's not something that is carved in stone, that we would not be able to get a billboard on our land, which is facing Route 3 Quarter. It's not something that would be seen by any of the residences. It was, it is right on the western portion of our land. And we're concerned that if the town meeting votes yes and takes this overlay away, that you have, in a sense, taken some of the value away from our property. Now, I understand that this value has only existed for a short period of time, but on the other hand, the fact that the town was not able to get this to go forward does not necessarily mean that over the course of time, we would not be able to get it to go forward. We may choose to go with a different vendor, regulations may change, state governments come and go, and let's face it, what the state does is always nebulous. It's never really ever carved in stone. I guess I would point out one more thing. The town has, over the years, been forced to create things to either satisfy a court decision or to deal with new law. We can all remember one point where there were no political signs allowed, and due to a court case, all of a sudden, well, now you have to have them. We had to set aside an X-rated district so that the town could control where, if that type of business went. And massage therapy, and now medical marijuana. And to say that taking away the billboard zone, or the district, or overlay, would keep anyone from getting a billboard in the future, I don't think is a complete impossibility because of what a court might say and what a court might force the town to do in the future. And I'm not speaking about us litigating, it's just in general. There have been many things that the town has been forced to deal with after the court has made a decision. So again, we would very much like you to either withdraw the article and revisit it in October, especially, the town, in our discussions, has indicated you're extremely sure that we can't get a billboard. So I don't see how waiting till October would be a real issue. What we would really, all things being equal, prefer that you defeat the article. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for letting me speak again.
Thank you.
George Merrill, Precinct Two. I'd like to make a motion that we put this article off till next October. I'll sign the paper, if you've got one.
That's an amendment, is that correct? Okay, I've just been told by town council, it's really not an amendment, it's an amendment to defer, just needs a majority vote. So I will ask for the vote.
Point of order?
Yes.
Do we have some discussion before this vote?
Yes.
I am against repealing this bylaw, and I'll tell you why. Our Board of Selectmen--
No, she's speaking against the motion.
No, I'm speaking for the motion.
You're speaking, wait a minute, whoa, what's on the floor is the motion to defer.
Pardon me?
The motion to defer. You don't want to defer this, so you should be speaking against it.
Oh, yes, okay, so I would like it deferred. So which mic am I supposed to be on? I would like it to be deferred for six months.
You would like to defer this till--
Fall town meeting.
Till when?
Fall town meeting.
Fall town meeting, okay.
And I'll explain why.
Okay.
The Board of Selectmen, in a very economically tight time, charged the planning board with coming up with this billboard bylaw because we wanted turf fields. Guess what? We got them. And this was supposed to help fund that. And that was Sal's idea and what came around. Now, we never knew that the billboard funds were going to go for the turf fields, it was going to go into the general fund, it was going to, but it was going to help. You know what I mean? So we had an opportunity that we created for ourselves, and being on the billboard bylaw committee, we could not just do this on town property. We had to open it up, and we opened it up to the church. And included them in the overlay that they could have the same opportunity that the town had to make some money. And it's good money, it's like 70,000 to 50, you know, I won't talk to that. But I feel very strongly that this bylaw passed by one vote, and if you take it off the books, it's never coming back. And you are taking an advantage of a private church of our town and taking an opportunity away from them that they have not completely explored yet. And that offends me. You know, we've done a lot for the churches in town with CPC and everything else, why would we take this away from them? It makes me very upset. And I think, you know, they respectfully came to our planning board meeting, and they asked us to wait six months. It was not a unanimous vote of the planning board to support this. There was two that abstained, and I was one of them, because we thought we should stay neutral on this. And I, you know, when the town creates an opportunity for themselves, I think you really need to let everybody else explore their opportunities. I am happy, next October, to repeal this bylaw if the church is unable to do it. And actually, if the church is able to do it, let's repeal it anyway, because we'll never get any more. You know, but give them the chance to get what they want. It makes their property values better, and that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Carter, Precinct Five. I am not in favor of deferring this. I procrastinate just like the next person, but in my opinion, four and a half years, if you're serious about wanting to get a billboard, you would have initiated this process well in advance. Planning board approved the one on the high school site, and it's been en masse. The Outdoor Advertising Board, and we've had decisions, I believe we had them as early as last fall. They've already had six months. Let's, why delay it? Let's just do it and get it over with. If they haven't done anything yet, shame on them.
Next.
Glenn Thorin, Precinct Five. I guess I'm a little bit disappointed that people aren't putting this into a perspective that looks at what the town has gone through and probably what the church is going through right now. I'm on the board of directors of one of the larger churches in town, and I know that in the economic times that we've just been through, it's very difficult to raise funds. Raise funds to keep the church building in repair, raise funds to do the mission work of the churches and so forth, it's been very difficult. And that's one of the reasons why it's been difficult to get billboards placed in some of these locations. It's been the economy. The participation rate of jobs is way down, unemployment is way up. Churches that are trying to remain viable and serve their congregations, most of which come from this town, are struggling. And if you're a member of a church organization, you probably realize that as well. Now, the economy is beginning to improve somewhat, so I see no downside whatsoever to waiting six months. If there are no billboards on that property now, and there is not going to be because it's the wrong place and the billboard companies don't want to do it, fine. But to take the opportunity away from this church organization with the people that live in this town and worship in that facility, and try to maintain it with the funds that they are able to take out of their pocket during difficult times, is the wrong way to look at it. So for the difference of six months, to wait till fall town meeting, I think it's a respectful thing to do, I think it's the right thing to do. I haven't yet told you how I would vote on it six months from now, but I'm not going to take away the opportunity for them, while the economy is improving, to at least make an attempt to do something that would help their congregation, to help their facility, to maintain their viability for members of this town who have been here for a long, long time in the North Chelmsford Congregational Church. So I would vote to support this delay to the October town meeting, see what happens, it's a limited time, then we decide.
Thank you. Next.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct One. I'm opposed to postponing this until fall meeting. Four years ago, when we voted this article, the billboard overlay in, a lot of people were against it at that time because they simply didn't want billboards. But it was sold as a benefit to our kids or a potential benefit. And, you know, we'll do a lot for our kids that we wouldn't do otherwise. The question is, do we want billboards? That's the question on the table here, whether we vote for it now or vote for it later. And my feeling is, they've had that, they've had a long time to put a billboard in, it hasn't materialized. It's time for the town to decide, do we want billboards or don't we want billboards?
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Moderator, I think we skipped the question part, so I'd like to ask a question first.
We didn't skip the question part. A motion was made that's not a warrant article, so there's no question and answer.
All right. My question is this, and directed to the manager or to Community Development Director, and that is, what harm would be caused by delaying this for six months approximately?
The manager's designee will tell you.
No particular harm would be done by delaying it six months. If within six months, the church initiates a zoning process, the planning board would need to review the article, review the project in accordance with the bylaw. What may, what I presented earlier, what may happen, particularly with the revised regulations and the attention that town meeting is giving the article, is that the industry is likely to take their own action as well. And whether that means proposing additional properties in the overlay or trying to negotiate with the intent of a waiver provision, those are real, those are real possibilities with the new regulations.
Okay, thank you. But those would have to come before the town meeting. If they came in to add to the overlay district, that would have to come to town meeting, and if that is the town meeting where we would take action that we delayed tonight, then that would probably be okay. I just want to preface my remarks by telling you that I was on the original, well, I was appointed to the committee that crafted this after a planning board member left, so I didn't sit the whole time, but I sat most of it. And while we wrote, and George, and Colleen deserve a lot of credit, because they had a lot of it done before I got there, obviously, while we wrote a very good bylaw, the planning board, as a group, didn't recommend it at town meeting. And I did not vote for it at town meeting, but now that it's there, and we're looking at a billboard that's about two miles away from another one in Tingsborough, or right up the street on the same side, I don't see any reason why we can't wait the six months and bring this back to fall town meeting and see where the church is at that point, and if there's been no movement, we close it up in the fall.
Thank you.
So I hope you vote to defer.
Next.
Tom Hall, Precinct Five. I'm opposed to this. Probably the main reason is, it was such a close vote last time we voted it. And I'm a firm believer in the fact, we have boards in this town for reasons, and the Board of Selectmen feel that this is the time that we should-- And if the Board of Selectmen feel that this is the time that we should be undoing this bylaw, and I think it's a good idea to undo it. We're here to vote the business of the town, not the business of the church. And I believe they've had enough time. If they knew this was coming up, they should have done some more work prior to this to, you know, resolve their problem. Thank you.
Next.
Colleen Stansfield, Precinct 6. With all due respect to the previous speaker, the church is part of the town. And I'm sorry, but this is a... This was charged by the Board of Selectmen, and I will say it again. They wanted it. They wanted to create an opportunity for the town. We created it. We added it in the church. And I am going to stick by this, that we cannot pull the carpet from underneath them. And waiting six months, whether or not they find access or whatever, and the scare tactics that somebody else is going to come in and spread the overlay district, that's bull, okay? There is no way that this body is going to spread that district. They're already against it. So that is bull, okay? Everybody just realize that this is exactly how it is right now. It's the church and the town properties, and that's it. It will never get expanded. And I bet all of you will agree with that, that you will never expand this. And then, once the church, if they can or they can't get their thing, then repeal it, and we'll never have to worry about it again. But don't take the opportunity away from a good part of the community, a church in North Chelmsford that always seems to get slighted, you know? Come on. We did this for a reason. Let's let them take their time and try to do it.
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Moderator, Peggy Dunn, Precinct 1. I'm against this amendment. And I'm also a little concerned that the main reason this amendment is being...
Actually, it's a motion to defer.
Yes. I was going to say, the main reason for deferring it is to give the church extra time. And I'm just worried that we're doing this for one particular section, portion of the town. Therefore, everybody else would, you know, wouldn't have that. I'm just uncomfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The bylaw, Judge Merrill, Precinct 2. The bylaw is in place. It hasn't been repealed. So we're operating under the assumption that the bylaw is still legal. The speakers that say the church have done nothing is erroneous. It's not true. We've entered in a release agreement with a sign company for fifteen hundred acres of fifteen hundred square feet of land, hundred by fifty, along Route 3. It has to be within seventy-five feet of Route 3. And it's the highest point in surrounding area, two hundred ninety feet. We are still in negotiations, so when these people say that we've done nothing, they are wrong. We have done something. I'd like you to let us continue and vote to postpone till next October. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Fran McDougall, Precinct 1. I think part of what we're missing here is the fact that I and many other people here, and also when we took the vote, were completely opposed to having billboards in the town of Chelmsford. And I think a lot of us still feel that way. And I dislike the idea that it's being put up to religion or anti-religion tonight. I served on the O.K.O. Committee. We studied placement of billboards in that area. We had the stakeholders from the billboard company come in and speak to us. There are many things connected to putting up a billboard. One was running in-lines, power lines, to get to a certain point. Another question was whether or not this church property has access other than from Route 3. Whether the billboard company would be willing to go through the state to get access to that property. Where would the power lines come from to get to that property? We studied this. It's not something out of the air. We have talked about it with the billboard people. And a personal opinion again, I don't want billboards, period. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Next.
Glenn Thorin, Precinct 5. I return to the microphone to try and clarify a few points that some of the previous speakers have said. A lot of the details about power lines and everything else could be out there just to confuse you, but it's really a lot simpler than that. You know, how do I want to feel when I leave this meeting? You know, how do I want to feel with respect to part of the community? They say, "Well, we had the other billboards up there because we wanted to do something for the whole town." Well, that's not really why we voted on that, because another speaker came up and said, "We wanted to do it for the children." You know, the children in the schools. And yet, not everybody that lives in this town has children in the schools. So by a two-thirds majority, we voted in these overlay districts to support the interests of a small group of the town. And it's no different with the church. The church represents a population in the town that just happens to worship in that building and hold that property. It's not like they have the whole town going to that church, although I'm sure they would like that. And it's not like the entire town would be using the turf fields that the other billboard properties were put in place for. So how do I want to feel when I leave this meeting? You know, I'd like to feel that we gave the church an opportunity over the next six months to conclude whatever it is they're doing, instead of slamming the door shut on them because they're a different community than maybe the whole town. Just like the children that the other billboards were going to be up for, for their turf fields and athletic facilities, might be a different community than the whole town. As you've heard here, there's no downside to waiting till October. The result will be the same. But I think it's more than a respectful way to treat a very important member of this town, to give them the opportunity to conclude or not conclude by a time certain, the October town meeting, what they're going to do with that property. You know where that is. If you drive by that, there's nothing there except the next billboard that you see on the right side of the road. So it's not like it's in anybody's window. You know, it may never come to pass. But again, I want to leave this town meeting feeling like I have respectfully considered the wishes of an important group of people in this town who have spent time trying to establish an opportunity to fund their facility, to fund their activities by putting a billboard up there in a very unobtrusive place. So I urge you to support the delay, and the result may be what you want it to be in October, and we do a respectful thing for the church.
Next.
Thank you.
Debbie Derry, Precinct 6. I remember the evening that we sat for almost four hours concerning these billboards. We didn't leave here till twelve o'clock at night. And I will be honest, I didn't want the billboards then. I don't want the billboards now. And every time I drive into Boston, I say, "Thank God we don't have billboards in Chelmsford." It's not disrespectful to the church. The reason why it was brought before us previous was because of fields. And that was part of the reason why it was agreed to. But there was many people in this room that were not very pleased. I strongly urge us to vote yes this evening. I cannot understand why we have to wait till October. I thought things were pretty well settled. I don't... And I do recall, although I wasn't on that committee, what was presented at the time. There was question about how to get the lighting to these billboards that was owned by the church property. It's all coming back to me now. And I really, you know, I feel sorry for the church. There's going to be another way to fund. Although I don't belong to that church, there's many churches in town, I'm sure. They're all looking for money. But I urge you to please vote yes, so we don't have to have billboards in our town.
Thank you. Next.
Jeff Stalid from the Congregational Church. You know, I find it ironic that you thank God that we don't have billboards, and we thank God for the opportunity to create revenue. I wonder what God thinks. We do have access other than Route 3. That needs to be put on the record. We do have access. There are many people that have questioned whether we have access. We do have access. In regard to being singled out as a special interest here, I guess I would remind those who haven't been around forever that when the North School burned down in 1982, we offered our facility for the town to use to vote. We have been one of the few places over the years before the community centers where you could actually get a meeting room, a space, or a gymnasium that wouldn't cost you an arm and a leg by having to go to one of the schools or a private facility. We have opened our doors to use the restroom facilities for the Memorial Day activities in the north section. We have graciously supported our pastor, being the fire department chaplain. I don't think that this should be construed in any way as the Congregational Church in North Chelmsford trying to become a special interest. We have been integral part of, and I won't say your community or my community, of this community for as long as that building, in fact, before, when it was down by the mill, well before the turn of the century. So again, please give us a little more time. And I will take... I was asked at the planning board meeting, would the church promise to not fight in October if we were unsuccessful? I, as one individual, as chairman, I sort of would have the relationship to the board as your manager does to the selectmen, certainly cannot speak for the church. But I really can't see that the board would instruct us to come back and fight something again. We would like a little bit more time. We think it's reasonable, and we ask for your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct 1. You know, the question on the board, on the table here is, do we want billboards or don't we want billboards? And it seems to have been turned around into, do we want to support a single entity's financial profit by allowing this to stay on the books for another six months? The question I have to ask you guys is, do you and the constituents that you represent want billboards or don't want billboards? If we vote it now and we choose that we don't want billboards, it's over. If we leave this on the books for six months, we may very well have billboards.
Thank you. Next.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Actually, this is a motion to push the decision off for about six months. And I'd like to remind the body here that the town was actually started in a church. First town meeting was in a church down in the center. This town body voted a whole lot of money to replace the top end of a church, if you will, with our clock very recently. But this actually is also related to a business decision that this town meeting or folks before you have already voted on. It's not about a church or a town. It's about business. And they're being very kind to offer to put this off for six months for the town because tomorrow morning, what they could do is have their lawyer sue us for the damages to the value of their property. Now, the reason that town meeting put zoning in at a two-thirds vote is because zoning should be darn near a permanent decision. It's about real and real estate and property. This goes back to the British law, where real estate has a certain amount of value associated to it. And when town meeting four and a half years ago made a zoning change, we should have made a very serious, long-term zoning change decision, not to be changed just because of the whims of somebody making a decision. And I'd remind you that we just talked about medical marijuana, which is illegal at the federal government. We all said, "Oh, we got to run, put a regulation in at town." No, we don't. It's illegal. Now, we're looking at one regulator that's made a decision that says, "Ah, the state doesn't want to compete with Chelmsford." And they want to put their own billboards on MBTA property, which they can do. They don't want competition out there. So one regulator makes a decision that Chelmsford can't put a billboard up because there's not a business close enough to it. Now, again, this is a zoning bylaw change. It should have been considered permanent four years ago. We should have a very serious reason for switching it back. And changing a little bit of business here based on one state regulator is not a good decision to change zoning. We should not spot zone. We should not change zoning every few years because somebody gets scared that somebody else might get a little piece of the action. We need to let the church take six months. But frankly, when we vote the overall motion, we should just leave this thing alone. It is a zoning bylaw that we should leave permanent. So people trust the body to leave zoning alone and make good decisions and leave them alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Pam Armstrong, Precinct 3. When the town wanted to put up billboards, the state looked at the criteria and said that we didn't meet the criteria. The church also does not meet the criteria. They also do not have access unless they come through Route 3. I know the church tells everyone here that they do, and they can prove it, but they've been asked over and over and over again to prove it. I also live at Scotty Hollow, and we've hired attorneys that have looked back into the titles and deeds on this property as far back as they can go. And the church does not have any access from the Scotty Hollow side to get on the land, so they'd have to get it through the residents on the other side or another way that they're not willing to share with us. They don't have access to the land. They'd have to come in from Route 3 to put up their billboards. When the billboard bylaw came before this board four years ago, there was one vote that allowed billboards in town, and the rest of the town meeting said no. I said no. I fought very hard to say no. I don't think billboards belong in Chelmsford. I don't think we need them. This isn't about denying the church. The state will deny the church. They don't meet the criteria. They don't have the access. What we need to do is to correct the planning board zoning that was in place that now is no longer needed in the town. It has nothing to do with the church. And every time that something comes before town meeting to be changed, Brian says, you know, "We shouldn't be changing zoning." We change zoning all the time. That's what the planning board does. They bring it before the town meeting, and we make the changes that are necessary. This is a necessary change. It's something that the land that was looked at by the town that would hold a billboard was then looked at by the state and was denied. The church will also be denied. There's no reason to continue this for six months or keep this on the books.
Thank you. Next.
Sue Carter, Precinct 5. I move the question.
Motion made to move the question. Takes a two-thirds majority. We'll try for the tickets. All those in favor to move the question, raise your tickets. Opposed? Okay, we are voting on the motion to defer Article 26 till October town meeting. If you're in favor of deferring, vote yes. If you're opposed to deferring, vote no. It only takes a majority vote. The yes votes are fifty-four. The no votes... Whoa, what happened? No votes are seventy-three. Abstentions. The motion to defer is defeated. We're back on the main motion. Back on the main motion, and we're in debate. Scene.
Beth Logan, I move... We've moved the question.
Motion to move the question. All those in favor, raise your tickets. Opposed? We are going to a vote. All those in favor of Article 26, and this is a two-thirds vote now because we're on the main motion. Vote yes. All those against Article 26, vote no. Abstentions do not count, but you can abstain. Three. Vote one is yes, two is no, three is abstain, but it doesn't count. Ted, could you keep it on like for five seconds so that we can? Okay, the yes votes are 83, the no votes are 39, abstentions are four, they don't count. Eighty-three is greater than 83 plus 39, two-thirds. The article passes. Article 27. I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article 27. All those in favor, raise your tickets. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This amendment to our zoning bylaw deals with political signs. And the reason that I put this article on the warrant is basically this section of our zoning bylaw pertaining to political signs is not enforceable because of court rulings that it's unconstitutional. And so why does that matter? Well, because every time we get into an election season, people want to follow the provision of the bylaw, and then they call the office, my office, and zoning enforcement and so forth, asking us to enforce the political sign bylaw. And then we get into the issue of then explaining to them that, yes, it's on our books, but it's not enforceable. So what we attempted, what we're attempting to do here is to change the language of the bylaw to make it clear that it's now the preference of the town rather than the requirement of the town regarding the placement of signs in election seasons. My feeling was, the other alternative would have been to delete the bylaw, provision of the bylaw. But I think then it would have taken away what the preference, voted preference of the town was and may still be. And so that's what you see here in the underlying text. We basically just take the words "may" out and we basically say it's the town's preference that signs be erected no sooner than 21 days prior to the date of an election and be removed no later than 14 days after the election. And therefore, if somebody violates the town's preference, then I guess they would do that at their own political peril. But that's the reason what we're seeking to do here is really is to make it an administrative issue. And the reason that it's not stricken from our books from the Attorney General's office when the court rulings came down is the AG office isn't that proactive where, when there's a court ruling, that they don't go out and then request all the town's attorney in their bylaws and they don't have the ability to strike it. So basically, we ask for your consideration if that's what your preference is in terms of cleaning up this portion of our signed bylaw that's not constitutional. Thank you.
Questions?
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, through you to the attorney. Can Town Meeting pass preferences? I thought Town Meeting could only pass laws.
Mr. Town Counsel.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Yes, Town Meeting can vote this bylaw amendment. It's in proper legal form. It would not be legally binding on anyone. It is merely an expression of the town's preference as spoken through Town Meeting.
And, Mr. Moderator, to be clear, we're passing a preference, not a bylaw in this case?
Mr. Moderator, the preference is contained in a bylaw.
Thank you. Next.
Tom Vole, Precinct Five. To Mr. Cohen. If this is enacted, does this include both sides? What I mean, is it residential plus the town property or is this just the residential property?
Well, this has to do with residential. It doesn't pertain to, we don't allow political signs on town property that are, you know, as you know, other than Election Day. So this has to do with, this has to do with residential property, not town property.
Well, if there was, if there's an election, usually you'll find on town property going into the schools that there are signs put up. Would those signs have to be removed if we change this bylaw or could they leave those signs up?
Yes, yeah, we don't, we don't, if there are signs put on school property or town property, we remove them if it's not Election Day.
So this, excuse, one more question, Mr. Moderator. So this, this would not affect that at all? We'd still be able to have those signs removed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Dennis Sheen, Precinct Four. I just want to get a clarification. The preference is just for when the sign goes up and comes down, is that correct? So, I mean, other things like it can't be, it has to be free signing, all the other stuff would apply and would be enforceable, would it not? Or is the whole thing not really enforceable? What specifically are you? Okay, the question I have is in the middle. It talks about preference of the signs being, being put up and taken down. Is the whole bylaw not enforceable or just the times that we're talking about? I mean, are the size, the sizes, are they enforceable? There's nothing enforceable here. To whoever can answer the question.
Town Counsel.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The remainder of this bylaw is, in our opinion, constitutional. The issue with this particular sentence, however, is that it could be construed as an unreasonable regulation of the time duration during which a sign can be put up. Towns can make reasonable regulations as to the time, place, and manage, manner of exercising free speech, and in this case, it's, of course, political speech. So the, the court decisions that the town manager was referring to involve striking down bylaws that have an unreasonable, an unreasonable limit on the length of time that a political sign can stay up. But the rest of the bylaw is fine in terms of the size, et cetera.
Right, okay, that was my question. I want to make sure everything else was still valid, valid and enforceable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Just a point of clarification, Colleen Stansfield, Precinct Six. This is really a very simple thing. We are unable to-
Are you debating or are you asking a question?
I'm not. I'm trying to belay some of the questions that come along with this.
You can't do that. Just question and answer.
Point of information.
Yes.
Thank you. So this whole thing comes from the one word that's in that bylaw that says "shall." They shall be up, you know, three weeks before the election, they shall be down within two weeks after the election. It is unenforceable, it's free speech, and, you know, the building inspector will get calls and say that, you know, these people are violating our bylaw. Well, our bylaw is unenforceable. So what we're doing is clarifying it, that the preference of the town is to not have these signs up all the time. And, you know, so the question isn't back to the building inspector to enforce these signs to come down. It's a very simple change in the bylaw. It's just saying that the preference of the town is that we don't have these up all the time and that's it. The square footage, I don't know. I mean, I've seen huge, you know, I don't know about the square footage. Is that enforceable, Paul?
Yes. I assume you're not going to make the same presentation during debate.
No.
Okay. Next.
George Ripson, Precinct Four. The only question had been relative to the other facets of this particular article, and I was looking at the 24 square feet. Is anything enforceable? And apparently, we can control that.
Yes, I think that question's been answered.
Thank you.
Next.
Pam Armstrong, Precinct Three. I don't mean to be redundant, but I just want to understand this. So we could put signs up 30 days in advance and keep them up for 30 days after, is, or sooner or longer? And we're, this is just, we're asking you to please stay within, but you can do longer or shorter. And what about the 15-foot?
That's been answered, I believe.
Well, I said I might be being redundant, I just want to understand. So, does this also, one of the questions I had asked is if you have a fence, can you attach a sign to a fence without a person having to be holding the sign?
I don't think, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I believe the language is, speaks right there. It says, "Sign shall be freestanding and not attached to a building, tree, utility pole, or a fence, and shall be set back at least 15 feet from the street line."
So, but is that enforceable or is that a preference?
Town Counsel has already said, everything but the time limit is enforceable.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Well, I guess that's what I was going to ask. If you, my question was going to be, if you had a sign with your own name and your own property, how long could you have it there for? Couldn't you have it there forever? I mean-
If it's on your mailbox, probably forever.
If you were running and you had your signs made up in January and had your name on your property, who could tell you to remove it?
No one.
Okay.
Thank you. Scene, no more questions. Does the FinCom have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval with four in favor and one against.
Debate.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. This one's really interesting. This goes back to the very roots of our country, the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. These case law cases represent political speech. Political speech is a special free speech. It's, it's even more powerful than free speech. What I'm doing here right now is free speech to some degree. There's some, some limits. The moderator can limit me. Political free speech on a sign is part of your, your rights as an American citizen to challenge the government or to push for, for an elected official that you want. The case law that the Supreme Court, by the way, has, has validated is that someone has a right to write political speech on a sign, and in one case, it was a, it was a tire. And the town, in that case, decided that the guy has junk tires in his front yard and it happens to have something on it. We don't like what it looks like, and they tried to remove it. And the Supreme Court said, no, because there's political speech on there, that individual has a right to display it. What we're doing here is, we're kind of dancing around what Town Meeting can and cannot do. I do not believe that it is our place to put preferences up. That's something the selectmen can do by their edicts or their proclamations. Town Meeting is supposed to pass bylaws that are legal. In fact, when this Town Meeting, when I asked to say the Pledge of Allegiance after 44 men and women had been killed in action immediately following 9/11, 2001, the moderator at that time told me I could not have Town Meeting say the Pledge of Allegiance because Town Meeting had to go through a certain set of things, and we had to have a warrant article in order to say the Pledge of Allegiance. We couldn't change the procedure of Town Meeting. The next meeting, we had two warrant articles so this body could say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I remember it very well because there were six Eagle Scouts in the back of the room representing, in my view, good, good freedom of speech with American flag, ready to come in. After we voted yes, we could say the Pledge of Allegiance. And the moderator said the Attorney General had to approve our vote before we could say Pledge of Allegiance. And not one person got up and challenged the moderator, and we didn't say the Pledge of Allegiance after Town Meeting voted that, yes, in fact, we want to pass that warrant article. Because the Attorney General had to vote, had to tell us that our vote that night was legal. We had to wait a day. This is not a bylaw, this is a preference. Town Meeting, in my view, should not be getting into preferences, should not be telling us what color to paint our houses, whether or not we want signs in our yards or not, because this allows somebody to go to the individual in, in the, in one of the last elections, someone in our town had a sign up that was political, and we went to them four times and tried to enforce that law on that person. And we did it in a way that really bothered me a lot. We went to the landlord, who was a foreign national from another country, I don't know if he was a citizen, and we challenged him rather than the, the person leasing the property. Folks, we do not want to have things like this written into our bylaws because someone will try to enforce them with a letter with the town seal on it. And we'll leave out the important thing on there that it's a preference, okay? At the last election, one of the, the folks running went around and put signs up around the voting places and asked the police officer if, if that was legal, and he said, yes, it's legal with one exception. If those signs are blocking the view safety-wise of the driveway, then the police could take those signs down even though they were political. So the only reason you can take a political sign down is for safety reasons. Otherwise, it's free speech, it's protected by the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Supreme Court if it has free speech on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Will Wagner, Precinct Eight. With all due respect to the previous speaker, this article is not to change the bylaw to make things forbidden. This article is to put the bylaw's language into legally sustainable language. Currently, the bylaw is not legally enforceable. So we're asking to change the language so that it's not necessarily an enforcement issue. It reveals the town's preference towards the time limit and then enforces the rest of it about placement, size, and other things. So there should be no question here as to whether we need to change this because as it stands, it's not enforceable. If the previous speaker or other people disagree with any of the limitations there, they can, can and should submit an amendment to completely remove the article. Thank you.
Thank you. Shame more debate, we'll go to the vote. If you vote yes, you are voting to amend the bylaw to the status represented in Article 27. If you vote no, the bylaw stands as it is, supposedly unconstitutional. All those in favor, press one. This is a two-thirds majority vote. We have yes 115, no eight, zero abstentions. The motion passes. Article 28. I have a standing motion to waive the reading of the motion. All those in favor? Reading is waived. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This, this general bylaw is before you also because of a court ruling. This has to do with the issue of sprinkler systems into a municipality. And it was a court decision in Springfield that basically presented a problem with the fire protection bylaw that we have in our books. So basically, the fire department, basically through Deputy Chief Gary Ryan, worked with Town Council, drafted this bylaw. And at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Deputy Ryan, he can explain what's, what's being sought here.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Good evening. What we are seeking to do tonight is replace, amend our current sprinkler bylaw, which is Chapter 42, Section 6, which was adopted 22 years ago this week to reflect full compliance with the State Building Code. So just to get into it a little bit, basically, there are two general methods of monitoring a fire alarm system. The first method is what is known as an auxiliary fire alarm system. And basically, when a fire alarm system activates, it goes into alarm and it's signaled, the alarm signal is transmitted directly to our dispatch center as well as our fire stations. The supervisory system, which is option two, when the alarm signal goes off, it goes to an outside monitoring company like an ADT, the operator at- The operator at that outside company has to call the dispatch center, which then has to process that alarm and send it to the different fire stations. Currently, our current bylaw, Chapter forty-two, Section six, requires the use of option one, which is the auxiliary fire alarm system. As Mr. Cohen said, due to a recent legal challenge involving the Springfield Fire Department, the Supreme Judicial Court struck down Springfield's local ordinance, which, like ours, restricted the choices to one option. We stand before you today to ask that we seek full compliance with the State Building Code. Town council has worked with us to review and update our bylaw to reach full compliance.
Any questions? Seeing none, do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Debate.
Dennis Shane, Precinct Four. Maybe I missed the question part. How does this affect, I mean, most of the homeowners' alarms go to the supervisory type of thing? Were you all in, out of compliance previously?
Are you asking a question?
Yes, I am.
Of whom do you want to ask the question?
Whoever can answer the question, actually, Mr. Moderator.
This, what you're talking about is for residential, that, no, this only complies with certain buildings, certain commercial buildings, certain buildings that have sprinkler systems.
Okay.
Like apartment buildings, not individual residential homes.
If there's no sprinkler system, this doesn't apply whatsoever.
It applies if you have a fire alarm system, not a residential, like a single-family home. It's usually thirteen residential homes, homes that are protected with a sprinkler system, such as apartment buildings.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Next.
Bob Joyce, Precinct One. Question through you, Ms. Moderator, to the current speaker up there. We, if we adopt this, we will still have option one and option two. Is that correct?
That is correct. What we're doing is we're expanding the consumers' choices.
Okay. And my second question is, the private companies that will monitor this will charge for it. Now, does the town charge a fee for this?
We charge for the use of the system that we have employed right now, the auxiliary system? Yes, we do. We charge a yearly fee, and it's a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no one else queued up for debate, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-eight, which would amend the sprinkler system section of the town code? Press one. Opposed? Press two. Abstained? Zero. Three. Yes is one twenty-three. No is zero. Abstention zero. Unanimous.
Thank you.
I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article twenty-nine. All those in favor? Opposed? Reading is waived. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What we're seeking here is basically an amendment to our leash bylaw, our more formally-known Chapter eleven, our animal bylaw. And they, basically, it's to allow off-leash activities, and really, this would, is being brought, because early in the meeting, the town body elected to allow for the creation of a dog park, which by definition allows for dogs to be handled off-leash. And unfortunately, as our bylaws are currently written, they don't contemplate such a use. So what this would do, when it was drafted by Eric Merrill, our Animal Control Officer, it basically extends the current animal bylaw to provide provisions to allow for activities in an off-leash area, i.e. the dog park. So again, what the bylaw does real quickly, it allows activities in those areas that all other areas have to comply with our bylaws. Owners of dogs that are in the off-leash area have to be responsible for any injury or destruction caused by their dogs. Also, they would have to keep their dogs leased prior to entering and upon leaving the off-leash area. They also would have to keep their dogs at all times in the designated off-leash area. You have to keep a leash in their possession, and their dogs would have to be licensed and vaccinated, and also accompanied by the owner at all times. And again, it would also preclude any dogs that are deemed dangerous or potentially dangerous under the state statute would not be permitted in such an area. And again, these areas would be restricted to daylight hours, and the rules and regulations would be posted at such an off-leash area. I thank you for your consideration of this article.
Questions?
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct six. May the town designate any area to be off-leash, an off-leash area?
Yes, they'd have to be officially designated by such.
And is it done by, is it done by the town, or is it done by town meeting?
My understanding is, is it would be, it would be done by the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town. Again, the only area that we're contemplating aware of would be the dog park.
Thank you.
Next.
Bob Joyce, Precinct one. Number six on the slide, dogs determined to be dangerous or potentially dangerous. Do we have currently a list of those dogs? And then it refers to town of Chelmsford as well. Can you give us some light on that?
What this refers to is, back in July, when the state passed the budget and finished its legislative activities, they amended the first major overhaul in generations of the state's animal control or dog bylaw. There is a specific definition of a dangerous dog. At this point in time, only one hearing has come before the Board of Selectmen, so at this point, we only have one dog in the community that's considered a dangerous dog. The reason for that is it's a particular legal definition, and in many instances, a dog can be put down, or it is severely restricted in terms of how it is maintained by the owner in terms of enclosed facility. So it's not, it's not like we can't, the board cannot just draw up a list and say, "Your dog is dangerous, your husband's potentially dangerous." It is an actual legal definition that follows a public hearing, in which the dog owner is brought before the board, testifies under oath, and then the Board of Selectmen, under the provision of state law, makes the determination that a dog is dangerous.
Okay, so, second question?
I'd like town meeting to sort of keep the noise level down.
My second question, Mr. Moderator. So this would be a particular dog that comes before the Board of Selectmen, and not a judgment made by breed, right?
Right. In fact, this state law, in fact, prohibits the designation by breed of a breed as a dangerous dog. So we couldn't say, "No pit bulls can use the dog park." That is now explicitly prohibited by state law. They are dog-specific, not breed-specific.
Seeing no more questions, the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
We're in the debate section. Seeing no debate, we'll go to the vote. A yes vote would amend the Running at Large section of the town code to allow use of the proposed dog park. A no vote, number two, would not be in favor. The yes votes are one twenty-six, the no votes are zero, abstentions are one. It's unanimous. Article thirty. I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article thirty. All those in favor? Raise your tickets. Opposed? Reading is waived.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen, the town engineer, and I are requesting your approval to accept the following three roads as accepted ways in the town of Chelmsford. Alexandria Way, Arrowhead Circle, and Pleasant Avenue Extension. What's happened here is these are actually the culmination of about eighteen to twenty-four months of effort by the Town Engineering Division with the assistance of the bond held by the Planning Board to basically complete the work on these subdivisions in order that the residents who reside there can have vested to them the full acceptance of a public way, as was indicated to them when they purchased the property. Unfortunately, you know, what happens is, is sometimes the developers don't finish their work before they leave the area after they've sold the lots, and that's why we have a performance bond. So what's happened here is the town took the bond monies, did the engineering work, some in-house, some with engineering assistance outside of the house, can put the meets and bounds and other activities required, so that these three roadways meet our subdivision standards. So again, we ask your approval to get these in. And then the other benefit of not only assisting the residents, but also this adds to our Chapter ninety road inventory, which determines the amount of highway money we get back to the town for road improvement projects in the future. So we ask for your approval.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Any debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Press one for yes, two for no. Article thirty would accept the specified three speeds as public ways. The yes votes are one twenty-four, zero no, zero abstentions. Passes unanimously. Article thirty-one, Town Manager Paul Cohen moves that the article take no, the town take no action under this article. So the article is pulled. The next three articles are citizen petitions, and I ask that all the petitioners be given the same rights, the same privileges, the same respect, and the same courtesy as town officials that have proposed prior articles. Article thirty-two. Jerry Low moves to see that town meeting will reverse the Board of Selectmen's decision courtesy and respect, no matter who it is. Jerry Low moves to see if the town meeting will reverse the Board of Selectmen's decision not to enforce the preservation restriction on the, yes?
It was submitted not by Jerry Low, but by Roland Van Lu.
Can you come up to the microphone, please? Please identify yourself.
Sure. Kathy Tebby, Precinct one. The article was actually brought forward by Roland Van Lu, not by Jerry Low.
Roland Van Lu is not a town meeting rep. He needs a town meeting rep to make the motion.
I understand that, but you had said that the, that it was submitted by Jerry Low. It was actually submitted by Roland Van Lu.
The motion is made by Jerry Low.
Okay.
Again, Jerry Low moves to see that town meeting will reverse the Board of Selectmen's decision not to enforce the preservation restriction on the property, commonly referred to as Nine North Road, by strongly encouraging the Board of Selectmen to file an action to have the preservation restriction interpreted and enforced in an appropriate judicial forum to compel compliance by the owner of the property pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty, see General Laws, Chapter one eighty-four, Sections thirty-one, thirty-three, the Community Preservation Act. Is anyone going to make a presentation? I need a vote to allow... No, he can, you can speak, but you got to speak from there.
Pardon me?
The other presenter, you got to speak from the podium. Again, I caution town meeting to behave.
The purpose of this article is simple. It is to provide impetus to the Board of Selectmen to uphold the law on behalf of the residents of the town of Chelmsford. As many of you know, the Board of Selectmen has refused to allow the preservation restriction on the land behind Center Fire Station to be adjudicated and enforced. Although this preservation restriction is granted to the inhabitants of the town of Chelmsford because of a diversity in Massachusetts law, the Selectmen are the only entity allowed to enforce it on our behalf. They have refused to do so, which amounts to a partial release of the preservation restriction, which is not supposed to occur without a public hearing and with due consideration of the public interest. I have spoken to three of the Selectmen about their decision to file a formal legal brief that they have no duty and no desire to enforce the preservation restriction. Two of them expressed surprise that such a brief had been filed on their behalf, but they declined to take any action otherwise. It would appear that the tail continues to wag the dog in our town, with the town manager and town council siding with the developer, and simply instructing the BOS to go along. And that is why the impetus from town meeting is necessary on this question. The third Selectman indicated that the matter was closed by the vote of two Selectmen in 2010, that the preservation restriction was not being violated. But those Selectmen freely admit that they have not read the preservation restriction statute, nor did they review plans for construction before they voted. Ladies and gentlemen, if someone were to destroy your property, you would not allow associates of that person to simply vote that he did not do so. You bring the evidence to the judiciary for evaluation and enforcement. The Selectmen's refusal to uphold the law has resulted in costs to the town that are now in the millions. These costs continue to grow, as the Selectmen choose to side with the development interests of a single family at the expense of the entire town. It is outrageous that the Finance Committee has chosen to make this article, the only one on the entire warrant that they recommended against prior to the meeting, even though that means that legal costs for the town will continue to mount. There can be no reasoned argument for such a recommendation, especially since the article seeks to contain town costs and fees. I am confident that the posse of public officials that have decided over several years now to protect the interests of the developers intend to contend that the preservation restriction has already been adjudicated in land court. That little nugget of misinformation is part of the web of misinformation that has been put forth for years. The fact of the matter is that the land court judge has ruled that no one but the Selectmen has standing to request interpretation and enforcement, and the BOS has refused to ever make such a request. You may recall that the town manager and lawyers for the developer made the assertion that the preservation restriction itself could not be clarified or augmented by evidence of the intent of the original framers. But that is precisely the opposite. It is the opposite of what the legal framework requires. The legal framework in Massachusetts doesn't just allow such evidence, it requires that it be evaluated and the meaning interpreted in the context of the process that occurred in framing the preservation restriction. But the Selectmen have historically refused to do so. This article encourages them to remedy that by remanding the interpretation and enforcement of the preservation restriction to the judiciary, which is more knowledgeable about the law and likely to be more objective about interpretation and enforcement. Besides upholding the rule of law, such a move would save the town legal expenses that it has continually and unnecessarily engendered by defending the developers' interests rather than the interests of the people in the community. restriction has already been adjudicated in land court. That little nugget of misinformation is part of the web of misinformation that has been put forth for years. The fact of the matter is that the land court judge has ruled that no one but the Selectmen has standing to request interpretation and enforcement, and the BOS has refused to ever make such a request. You may recall that the Town Manager and lawyers for the developer made the assertion that the preservation restriction itself could not be clarified or augmented by evidence of the intent of the original framers, but that is precisely the opposite. It is the opposite of what the legal framework requires. The legal framework in Massachusetts doesn't just allow such evidence, it requires that it be evaluated and the meaning interpreted in the context of the process that occurred in framing the preservation restriction. But the Selectmen have historically refused to do so. This article encourages them to remedy that by remanding the interpretation and enforcement of the preservation restriction to the judiciary, which is more knowledgeable about the law and likely to be more objective about interpretation and enforcement. Besides upholding the rule of law, such a move would save the town legal expenses that it has continually and unnecessarily engendered by defending the developers' interests rather than the interests of the people in the community. A vote for this article is a vote for the rule of law. A vote against this article condones the abrogation of the rights of all our residents in order to favor the profit of a single politically connected family. Thank you.
Not seeing any. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends against this article.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend against this article.
We're in the debate section.
I move to call the question.
Motion has been made to call a question. Takes two-thirds. We'll go by the pink tickets. All those in favor of calling the question? All those opposed? Question is called. We'll now go to the vote. Article thirty-two would reverse the Board of Selectmen's decision not to enforce the preservation restriction on Nine North Road. Press one if you are in favor of this, press two if you are opposed to it, three to abstain. The yes votes are twenty-one, the no votes are ninety-six, there are six abstentions, the article fails. Jerry Low moves to see if the town will vote to amend the Town Code, Section one-nine-five dash one-oh-two, Board of Appeals, for purposes of amending Section A by deleting the language shown in strike-through and adding the language shown as underlining as follows. And I will refer you to the, uh, permission to refer you to the screen and waive the rest of the reading. All those in favor? Mr. Low, are you making a presentation?
Point of information, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
It's my understanding, the opinion of Town Council, this article is not in proper legal form to amend the charter.
Town Council?
Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Meeting members, this article seeks to amend the town's bylaws to make the Board of Appeals elected rather than appointed. Under your charter, however, which by the way takes precedence over bylaws, the offices in town to be, that are elected are set forth specifically in the charter. So in order to be able to make the zoning board elected rather than appointed, it would require a charter change, and that's not before Town Meeting this evening.
It seems that Article thirty-three is out of order and will not be considered. I can correct it. He made a motion, we've got a vote on it. But first, we'll go through the whole procedure. Jerry? Any questions? Well, make your presentation. Come on, come on.
The only thing that I want to say is, I wanted this amendment to the bylaws, or change to the bylaws, to just give the citizens more of a say in how appeals are done, right? Today, the appeals board is appointed, and I felt that other boards are voted, school boards voted, planning boards voted. I thought that the Board of Appeals, which is very important and has a lot to do with how things are pushed forward in construction and development, happens through the Board of Appeals. So that was my simple intention on this. I don't understand the law as far as the charter part, but I'd like to have that explained to me at some point, but this is probably not --
Well, I think you have the option of pulling this and conferring with Town Council for the future. Your option.
And I have that opportunity to have that explained and how it could be changed?
If you pull this, we won't vote on it, and then you can meet with Town Council and frame another motion for --
Well, can the vote be that they can vote yes, and it's still not appro, it's not doable, just like --
Right. Basically, the motion has no legs, as it stands.
Well, I think there's a contention here whether it's legal or not, just like the one we had about the previous one where the town preference, whether that was legal or not. So I think we can still vote on it and then decide whether it's legal after the fact.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone.
Motion to indefinitely postpone, which is the same as tabling? It's --
It's not debatable.
Yes, it is.
It's not in my book.
No, he moved to indefinitely postpone. There's a difference.
We have a motion to indefinitely postpone this article.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four, point of order. We're laying this, the motion is to lay this on the table, is that correct?
Indefinitely.
And that's not a privileged motion, and you cannot interrupt the speaker, and I believe the speaker was still working?
That's true.
My understanding was the speaker was still talking and the moderator before this --
Point's well taken. Continue.
No, I mean, I would just like to see this come to a vote, to see how the town feels about it, whether it's legal or not, or appropriate. I mean, that we'd have to change the charter or not. I mean, if there's a positive vote for this, then we can figure out whether we want to change the charter, or maybe there's a way to still change it in the bylaws. That's all I have to say.
Any questions?
Mr. Moderator, Brian Latina, Precinct Four, through you to the Town Council. Is Town Meeting held to the same legal standard as lawyers, or are we held to a lower standard as normal, run-of-the-mill people who are not lawyers?
Don't understand the question.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting, any action Town Meeting takes must be consistent with the general laws, with the charter, and with the bylaws of the town. I've already provided you an opinion that this article, as proposed, is inconsistent with the Town Charter and is therefore not properly before Town Meeting, and I would recommend that you not vote to approve this because of the legal uncertainty it would cause. I would also point out that by its terms, this is a proposed amendment to the town's zoning bylaw. I do not know if the Planning Board even held a public hearing on this. If they did, then we need a report and recommendation from the Planning Board. If the Planning Board did not hold a public hearing, that's another reason why this vote, this article cannot be considered tonight. All I'm telling you is, you have to be guided. It's not about lawyers. It's about this body complying with the laws, the charter, and the bylaws of the town.
Okay, consistent with Town Council's answer right there, we are not voting on this article. The article is pulled. Huh?
I don't --
He said, "Don't vote yes," but he also said a lot of other stuff, and if it wins, it has no legs.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, just to be clear, my recommendation is that you not adopt this article. However, if the Planning Board did not hold a public hearing, Town Meeting is legally precluded from voting on this tonight in any event.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. Town Meeting, Town Meeting has been presented with a warrant article from a citizen, and I believe, unless I'm incorrect, the Selectmen approved these warrant articles in advance of Town Meeting. In fact, they're printed in my book, and they're printed in a page that was left on the table here this evening. And in my opinion, Town Meeting could very well pass something that is illegal. In fact, tonight, we did reverse something that Town Meeting and the Attorney General both determined as illegal. I'm very concerned that a very good lawyer, one lawyer in the room, will be challenging Town Meeting not to do anything that is in our, perhaps, interest, but more important in our responsibility to vote yes or no when a citizen brings up a warrant article. Legal or not, until the Attorney General makes that decision tomorrow or the next day, it really doesn't matter. Town Meeting should not be listening, in my opinion, to just one lawyer as to whether we can move forward or not.
You're welcome to hire your own.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
There's a statement in that. The Board of Selectmen did not approve this article. Under the provisions of the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen has to put on the Town Meeting warrant any and all articles that are submitted with ten signatures. It is not a Board of Selectmen's approval of this, it was a board's duty to put this on the warrant as submitted in exact written terms.
I would disagree with that statement because the way I read it, and here we go, I'm not a lawyer, the way I read it, it said that the Board of Selectmen has the right to review any warrants and decide whether they are appropriate for Town Meeting.
I think Town Manager just read what the rule is.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Chair of the Planning Board, Ann McGuigan, Precinct One. This article has never been in front of the Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, in that case, without a report, without a public hearing and a report and recommendation from the Planning Board, by law, Town Meeting cannot consider an amendment to the bylaws. So this article now is out of order.
Okay, by ruling of the Town Council, the article is out of order. I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article thirty-four. All those in favor, raise your tickets. All those opposed? Reading is waived. Is someone going to make a presentation? It's a motion was made by Jerry Low.
Okay, hopefully you all have this article in front of you. It's pretty simple. The first two sentences of the article have to do with providing written work orders for services, that is, labor-oriented services to the town.
I ask you to please be quiet and listen. Go ahead, continue.
For labor and services that are in excess of $2,000, $2,000 or more. And the reason for that is both to protect the town, because verbal contracts are very difficult to enforce, and to keep mistakes from happening in the first place, because verbal instructions, as all of you are aware, are prone to be misinterpreted much more than written instructions. Now, the Finance Committee did have a, an agenda item on one of their meetings to discuss this, and a couple of concerns came up that I would like to address. One question that arose was why the figure of $2,000? And the reason is that it's large enough to present, to prevent, pardon me, it's large enough to prevent an onerous paperwork burden. If, if there is an open purchase order for services to be provided to the town on the order of a half a million dollars, and my understanding is there are very few, if any, that would be above that, then the theoretical maximum for emails that would have to be generated would be one per day. That, obviously, that's if every contract was at the absolute minimum of $2,000 threshold for this. So the actual scenario is we're talking about one or two emails a week maybe, in order to protect the town from things like the clearcutting at Parker School and the mispainting of lines on scenic roads and such. There was also some questioning, some concerns perhaps, about the meaning of agreement. You see, the second sentence says all, let's see, all work, I'm sorry, it's the first sentence, "All work that is to be charged at least $2,000 must have a prior written agreement signed by the Town Manager or a department head," and it goes on to say that email is permitted. An agreement is nothing more than an offer, and followed by an acceptance. So for instance, to trim the trees at Parker Middle School, the DPW, the department head could send an email saying, "We would like trees trimmed within a fifteen-mile, fifteen-foot setback from the buildings. We expect this to take no more than such hours, and the pay rate will be such and such." And then the return email can say, "Okay, got it, we'll do." That's an agreement, folks. In fact, it's an enforceable contract. So we're not talking about eight pages of fine print or anything else. And that would have precluded the logging company that was eventually engaged to do that tree trimming from seeing a stand of trees that was worth thousands of dollars to them and saying, "You know what? We've got no written instructions, and there's nothing keeping us from taking those down and making a few extra thousand on this job." So that's what this is all about, is to just have in writing the work orders so there's no confusion and there's no opportunity for exploitation, and so that the town can enforce the work that it wants done. Now, the rest of the wording there, it's, the third sentence begins, "With respect to such work that is entered by a no-bid contract," the rest of the wording deals with the recording of the information about no-bid contracts. And it simply details what should be in the documentation. And the reason for that is that there's been no public disclosure of precisely how much work is done on behalf of the town via no-bid contracts. At least one public official has inferred that the number is zero, in which case this is zero work for anybody in the government. But if it's not zero, we ought to be able to know about it. But the Town Manager has refused to provide that information, stating in a formal statement that it's not required by law, therefore, he's not going to disclose that information. So that's the reason we have the article.
Question?
Bob Joyce, Precinct One. I don't have a question of the petitioner, but I do of the Town Manager.
Mr. Manager?
Not, not including the school department. Do we currently have a requisition slash PO slash work order system in place for the town?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I'd like to have the Town Accountant answer that question, because I think that some people are questioning my integrity and character, and perhaps they'll believe the Town Accountant a little more than me.
I did, I did no such thing, by the way, but you implied it.
Yes, we do have a purchase order system. We don't, we do not use the requisition system, but we do use the purchase order system. We don't use it at the $2,000 level, we use it at a $5,000 level. We use it at a $5,000 level.
Okay, follow-up question for the accountant, Mr. Moderator. So, if I wanted to buy something, I call your office and they cut a PO. I mean, I work in business and we have to do a rec first. That gets approved by certain people, and then the PO is cut. So, you don't do that part, no?
We don't do the requisition. We actually just go to the PO. The PO is filled out by the department head, is then sent to me via email. I then put it into the system, and then goes through, into the account, takes that money, sets aside that PO is now sitting there waiting for an invoice or for work to then happen at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Next. Thank you.
I think this question's for the town manager, but you can move it over if you'd like. And that is, if we were to approve this petition, how much extra work are we looking for in town offices over the course of a year?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, I call upon the town accountant. I do not appoint the town accountant. The board of town accountant is appointed by the Board of Selectmen and is directly answerable. Therefore, I think her answer would have more credibility in the minds of some than mine.
Thank you, sir. I just find that the burden of two thou, I think the threshold of $2,000 is a little low. $5,000, to me, is sufficient. We manage very well running POs through that level. I think at 2,000, everybody having to cut POs would just be a little bit time-consuming on department heads to be doing that. We have not had any issues with any, anything at that level, at that $2,000 level. So, I really think that this would be a little bit low for everybody to have to be cutting POs every time they want to go ahead and make a purchase at that level.
So, am I understanding correctly that the only real change here is that it drops the limit on which you process the paperwork? Correct. Okay, thank you.
Point of information.
Thank you. Next.
Point of information.
Yes.
I believe that's incorrect. I would like to correct that if possible.
Go ahead.
Ed Seleski, Precinct Five.
No, I'd like to correct that answer, so that she gets the answer to her question. The, you'll notice that the, the question of documentation does not specify the cutting of a purchase order for services at all. It talks about written instructions. It says, "All work for which the town is to be charged at least $2,000 must have a prior written agreement." We're talking about work that has already been authorized by an open purchase order. The DPW has open purchase orders in the amount of hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's fine, but you don't then go spend that amount of money with verbal instructions over time, and that's what's happening now.
The Department of Public Works does not have open purchase orders for several hundreds of thousands of dollars. It is false. The issue of the line painting that was referenced by a previous speaker, you know, we don't spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on line painting. We have no open purchase orders for hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's not how we manage this town.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator. I'm sorry, I must say that I have been told directly by the town accountant that the town most specifically does have open purchase orders for hundreds of thousands of dollars for things like road maintenance, including the line painting. That was told to me specifically.
No, I'm sorry. You, you, I'm sorry, but that's not what I said. You, that is not what I said.
Please clarify.
I showed you a copy of a contract of line painting and what we pay by linear foot. I do have all of the contracts in my office. There's no open purchase orders for line painting in my office, so please do not.
I didn't say that. I said there's an open purchase order.
You do not have hundreds of thousands of dollars of open POs for the Department of Works. That is not a statement. So, I, we did, I never said that to you, and I'm going to defend myself here, because that is not what I said. And I am the keeper of records. I have contracts in my office. I sign the contracts along with the town manager signs the contracts. POs are cut when we have certain work. I'm going to just say this, and I think that you are taking work orders and POs, interchanging those two words. I don't have work orders in my office. That is the department heads issue the work orders, but I do issue purchase orders. So, work orders and purchase orders are two, in my office, are two separate items.
Point of information.
Point of order.
This is, this is at odds with reality.
Point of order.
Yep. I'm sorry.
This is not in a debate sec.
No, I, I understand that, but presenting information that is misleading is not what we're here to do.
Point of order. Mr. Moderator. Every other presenter has been asked to sit down after they've presented, and if they want to argue, they have to come up to the mic here. Is this? No, she was given the answer. Town manager was giving the answer. His presentation was done. But he's still in a question and answer period. A question should be going to him, not during question and answer.
It's not going, yeah, it's going to anybody, right?
Question.
Ed Seleski, Precinct Five. I have a question for the town accountant, if I could, please. As part of the annual audit that gets done by an outside accounting firm of the financial statements of the town, it would be typical for that accounting firm to also submit a letter or of any identified material internal control weaknesses that would be considered problematic and potentially related to this issue at hand. Has the town received a letter from the outside accountants either stating that there are material internal control weaknesses or that none were identified as part of the audit?
We have never been written up regarding purchase orders. Our purchase order system runs perfectly fine, and they've never had a management letter write up on that at all.
Okay, and related question, follow-up question. Has there ever been any material control weakness identified with respect to control and approval over expenditures made by the town?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Your next question.
Yes, Jerry Low, Precinct Nine. I just want to understand a little bit better why work orders are not, when they are done and not done, and what is involved in work orders, and what, what threshold today. We do require a work order for services, and I just want to make it clear.
Who are you asking the question of?
Whoever can answer this. Town manager. You seem, don't seem not to be involved with the work orders, so I would ask someone else that's.
I would say the work orders are with the department heads. Each department head runs their own department, is in charge of their own work orders.
Well, yeah, and they have a budget, and they decide what work has to be done, but when, I would.
I would like you to ask questions and not debate.
No, no, the question is, is there any direction to them about getting work orders for work? That's the question. Is there any direction from the town? Is there any, you know, way, I mean, in any business that I've been in, when you contract for services, there's a work order, okay? Always a work order in a contract. Even if it's $200 to wash your windows, there's some kind of work order, because that protects the town. It protects us as well. If we're doing work without work orders, that's what I'm asking. Are we? The question is, are we doing work without work orders at a certain level? What I originally asked, and what are they, and how much are they, and where do we draw the line? That's the question.
There is, there is work orders, and the department heads are issuing those work orders. I would say, if there has been some mistakes, that there's, there's been some mistakes. But I know that the department heads issued the work orders, and the work is done. And I know with the depart, with the DPW director, he does issue work orders, and the work is then flowed down to the workers, and the work is done properly.
When you say mistakes, are mistakes that there wasn't a work order issued, or it wasn't clear?
You know, as the town manager spoke, we had a line painting issue. There was misinterpretation there, but the work order, there is, the work orders get written and they are followed.
Let me give the example. We had an issue of painting Byham Road. The instructions were for the Byham School. It was in writing. It was misunderstood between Byham Road and Byham School.
And the trees, was the trees, the cutting of the trees similar? What was the work order for the trees?
I'm just.
There was a directive, there was a direction given on the trees. Unfortunately, the assistant town engineer who was overseeing that work had left the site and was not present when that work took place.
Okay, so there was no work order with the company?
No, I said there was, there were direct orders on what work could be done, and what I'm saying is, the assistant engineer who was supervising the job, unfortunately, was not at that site when that work took place. It was an error. In my understanding is, in the direction of the Public Works Director, who used to be the Facilities Director, who's been with the town for 16 years, we know of no other instance where he's had such a problem managing a department or a work job. And obviously, he felt terrible about it. So didn't I, and so didn't many others. But you know what? Much like other governments and private organizations and homes and everything else, yes, believe it or not, we make mistakes too.
Okay. Town Council has, Town Council has something he'd like to say.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the body. The procurement of goods and services by the town is strictly regulated by state law. There are a myriad of statutes that apply. And what I will tell you is that any time the town wants to enter into a contract for the purchase of supplies or services that costs more than $5,000, there's a rigorous bidding or solicitation process that by law must be followed. And it's the town accountant's responsibility to ensure, when she approves warrants for payment, that those bid laws have been, have been followed. Secondly, any contract entered into by the town that exceeds $5,000, by law, must be in writing. The trend in Massachusetts over the last couple of decades has been not to try to regulate purchasing through local bylaws, which is what this attempts to do, because of the comprehensive state scheme that the town, that the town is already subject to and must comply with every provision of the, of the general laws relating to purchasing and procurement.
Okay, this is the end of the question and answer period. Recommendations, and come.
The Finance Committee met with the petitioner of this article. We found through multiple discussions that the language presented to this body was indicative to a financial policy and not a bylaw. So, we recommend it against it.
Selectmen.
What does Selectmen also recommend against this article?
Okay, we're now in debate, and Mr. Van Lou, you leave the podium. If you want to debate, you can get in line.
Maria Carafalas, Precinct Two. I'd like to move the question, please.
Motion has been made to move the question. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your tickets. Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're going to vote on the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion, Article thirty-four, which would amend the Code of Ethics section of the town code, vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. Yes is one, two is no, three is abstained. We have one more article. If you remember, Article eight was deferred till the very end. Is my mic cutting out? Okay. I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article eight. All those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is basically is seeking to appropriate funds to fund the first year of employee contract agreements with three of the town's collective bargaining units. Just in general, all of the town's collective bargaining agreements expire at June 30th of this current fiscal year. That's basically, that's nine unions on the town side, and that we, there's five unions on the school side. At this point in time, we've been able to reach agreement with three of the unions on the town side, the firefighters' union, the clerical union, and the public facilities union. And on the school side, they, under the provisions of state law, the school department does not bring agreements to town meeting for approval. And at this point, they appear to have reached an agreement with their administrators' union, and that will be forthcoming at a future school committee meeting, but that's the only agreement they've reached in the, in the school department. What we're seeking here is basically is, is to approve the first year of three-year collective bargaining agreements, as I said, with the firefighters' clerical and public facility unions. What the articles provide quite simply is 2% adjustments in the pay schedules for, per year for each of the respective three groups. As you can see, obviously, the firefighters' union is a larger group. We have 55 firefighters. There are 18 clerical union employees scattered throughout the departments of the town and the general government side, and 11 employees covered in the public facilities union. So, I'd ask the, the town meeting approval of the funding for these collective bargaining agreements. Thank you.
Question. Seeing none. Does the Finance Committee have recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Debate. Seeing none. Before we vote, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to thank town meeting members for their cooperation in this four-day marathon. Thank you. The yes vote seeks the appropriation of funds for collective bargaining agreements. No vote. Point your clickers. Yes, votes of 119, and no votes of 1. Attention. Could you please put your clickers in a basket? Since there is no more business before this meeting, I declare the meeting is adjourned.
And so it ends. Four sessions, four marathon sessions. In the words of the town moderator, Richard DeFradis, has brought the spring session of the annual town meeting, 2013 edition to an end. We have had a lot come before us in these past four evenings, many important, many not seemingly so important, but they still take a lot of time to work through. You know that these meetings are held only twice a year. It's the official business of the town. We have nine precincts in town and 18 town meeting reps. You can do the math. I believe that's 162 representatives, most of whom are always here tonight. In fact, they're required to be here, or otherwise, they lose their seats. What you saw this evening, especially toward the end, were citizen petitions, which are fairly rare at town meeting in any case, and rarely are they, even more rarely, are they so at odds with the wishes of, or the procedures that are going on in the town. As you could tell, there is a longstanding pointed friction between the town officials, particularly town manager Paul Cohen and Roland Van Lou, and that came forward in, in the debate that you saw here tonight involving issues having to do both with the Nine North Road episode, which, which took a lot of energy on the part of the town, and also with, with the procurement of contracts. In any case, I'm not really going to dwell on that very much, except to say that this is how the process works its way out. These are the people that you elect to represent you here at town meeting, and I encourage you to give them your feedback on how you think things, how you think things went, how you would have had them vote differently, or to give them your support. I hope you have our support, and we have yours. I'm Kelly B. for the staff and volunteers here at Chelmsford Telemedia. Thank you so much for being with us. We'll see you. We'll see you again very soon. Good night.